All right. Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the May 4th, 2022 meeting of the Edina City Council. It is 7:04 PM. And before we call the meeting to order, we're still operating in a hybrid condition for people that want to participate, as Director Bennerott said, either on the community comment portion of the agenda or with respect to a public hearing. So I'm just going to remind folks that might be watching the meeting on cable TV or at edinamn.gov. Live meetings are on Facebook. They can participate in community comment and the public hearing portion of the agenda this evening by calling 800-374-0221. That number's on the screen right now, 800-374-0221. Make sure you enter that conference ID number that's on the screen, 973-5799. And then give the operator your name, your street address, and your phone number. Press *1 on your telephone keypad when you'd like to get into the queue to speak, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Again, a reminder, when we get to the community comment portion of the agenda, you can call in to talk to the council about something, about most things, but not anything that's on the agenda this evening or otherwise scheduled for a future public hearing. So having provided that information, let's call Rol, Clerk Allison.
Councilmember Anderson.
Here.
Councilmember Jackson.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
Councilmember Staunton.
Here.
Mayor Hublin.
Here. And next, we're going to do the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, individual liberty and justice for all.
Thanks, everybody. We've got a meeting agenda that's been published, but with folks here tonight that are interested in one of the items that's later on the agenda, I'm going to ask if there's anyone on the council that would amend the agenda by replacing, actually moving the Reports and Recommendations section, which is Section 9, up in front of public hearings, which is Section 8, so it would follow special recognitions and presentations, then reports and recommendations, then public hearings. Is there a motion of that effect?
I will make that motion, Mr. Mayor.
Second by Member Anderson, motion made by Member Staunton, that we change the order of the agenda this evening by moving up the Reports and Recommendations portion before the public hearing portion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the amended agenda stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried. All right. We are now that we have an amended agenda ready for the evening, the next matter is community comments. So folks, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing? Yes, ma'am, please come forward. And I think if you go to one of the side podiums, just a reminder, you'll have three minutes, and you'll get a yellow warning light when you've got 30 seconds left, and then you can think about wrapping up your comments. Welcome.
Thank you. And I do think that Jennifer Garsky, I communicated with her, said that you, Ms. Bennerott, would have something.
Yeah.
So my name is Claiborne Day, and I live at 6300 Doron Lane. I'm here today to talk about, and I hope this isn't on the agenda, protection for mature trees in our neighborhoods. I spend a lot of time walking and running, and lately I've noticed that there seems to be a trend when a home is bought and a builder purchases it to kind of completely clear the lot of all trees. So I have, I assume you can see these. So this is just a little bit about what mature trees do for us, which I know you probably know all this, but when a tree comes down, air conditioning costs go up because the shade is gone, we lose homes for wildlife, and we lose the look of established neighborhoods. We've lived here, my family and I, for four years, and part of what drew us to Edina is that it's an established community, and I feel like more and more of our neighborhoods don't look like that. And so also, when a tree comes down, there's more direct sunlight, and so the need to water lawns increases. And so I do think that Edina seems to be like a really green place where there's a lot of things that I think we do well, like our composting program. Where I moved from, I had to pay for that, and so I'm grateful for that. I know we've got a big tree planting event coming up. I just feel like these old trees obviously can't protect themselves, and when they come down, it's more than just the property it's on who suffers. And so I have some pictures here, and I'm sorry if these are anybody's houses that are being built, but these are the houses, for example, that I run past. On the left is what the house used to look like with multiple trees. And in these two lots, which are side by side, I count four probably 50-year-old-plus trees that have come down, and I don't know what's going on in the backyard, but I assume the same because when they did clear the lot, there was just nothing. And I guess I know that these builders will probably come in and put a little stick of a tree about the size of me into the yard, but none of us are going to live to see those trees look like this. And so I just, I don't know what the solution is 100%, but I'm sure that there is one. I've noticed this in commercial neighborhoods, too, on 77th. They recently tore down some properties, and all of the trees are gone. And I just feel like that's really sad to see, and I think it really takes away from the look of our community. So I'm hoping that we can come up with a solution, which I'd be happy to help with. I hate presenting a problem without having the solution, but I just don't at this time. So I just wanted to push that out there and...
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Day.
Thank you. I appreciate it.
We've got a tree ordinance, but you're making some good points.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them? All right, let's go to online, folks. Again, if you're listening in and you wish to address the council in community comment with respect to an item that's not on the agenda this evening or scheduled for a future public hearing, there's your 800 number on the screen and your conference ID number. And don't forget to give the operator your name, street address, and phone number, and then press *1 to get in the queue to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Director Bennerott, do we have anybody?
I do have some callers on the line, but no one is indicating a desire to speak. As a reminder to those on the line, if you'd like to speak now during community comment, please press * then the number 1 on your telephone keypad. That's the asterisk symbol, then the number 1. Still not seeing anyone want to join, so I think it's safe for you to move forward with your agenda.
All right. Thank you, Director Bennerott. Manager Neil, our usual practice for folks in the audience, too, the city manager will respond to community comments and concerns that have been expressed at the prior city council meeting, and I think there's a couple of matters that you wanted to cover.
Yes, there are. Thank you, Your Honor. We had four speakers at community comment at our meeting in April, our second meeting in April. One was Nora Davis, and Ms. Davis was here to speak about Roslyn Park and the fire station and some additional reconnaissance that she had done with the children of the neighborhood adjacent to the Roslyn Park. So that was good. We also had a call from David Franco. He had a number of questions about mutual aid, fire department mutual aid, and why we don't have a closer mutual aid relationship with Minneapolis. We have, this is a question we've answered a couple of times before. We'll tell you that Minneapolis, for the most part, does not have a close mutual aid relationship with any suburban firefighter, fire department. We're no different than that. We do not train with them on a regular basis. We use different techniques. We do a lot of cooperative training with our other six or six neighbors, and we depend on them for mutual aid, for the most part. Bob Coteen spoke about the Vets Memorial and some changes that were coming in the Vets Memorial, and Roberta Castellano spoke, had a number of questions about her use of our Better Together Edina tool, and she had had the experience where she had submitted some comments but then didn't see them represented in the kind of the final product. And there's probably some culpability, I think, on both sides, both of the city's design of that product and also her use of it, as we've kind of worked through what happened. So she is aware of kind of what happened in that, there was a particular field that she was supposed to have filled out, and she didn't, but then she got a, she didn't get the right kind of response from our, from our software to let her know that clearly. So that was the main question for her.
Good. Did Manager Neil's comments cause any council member to have any follow-on with respect to any issue? All right, let's move on then to the consent agenda. There's several items on the consent agenda. Councilmember Jackson wants to remove Item 6M. Is there anyone else on the council that wishes to remove an item from the consent agenda? All right. Is there a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of 6M?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Anderson, that we approve the items on the consent agenda in a single motion with the exception of Item 6M. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And then back to 6M, which is the proposed Resolution 2022-42, which supports the E-line BRT recommended corridor plan. Member Jackson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. So as this has gone through the process with Metro Transit, we've heard from the neighbors and also from the 50th and France Association, and there were some issues that they were concerned about. The issues that were raised with me from the neighbors were a couple of things. One was they were concerned about the stop at 47th Street is on a hill and whether there would be erosion under the sidewalk and the sort of the aesthetic effects of the noise and the light of those stops and whether they could be placed someplace else. And then also, the 50th and France stop was right at 50th and France, and some of the business owners were concerned about that location and whether that would be a barrier to their business and the effects. And so I ran, run these questions by Mr. Scipione, and it looks like you're ready to answer them.
Yes, I sure am. Thank you, Mayor, council members. So to talk first about the 47th Street Station, well, first I'll say the recommended corridor plan didn't go into the level of detail of, you know, construction impacts with any of these station locations. This is just a first kind of a step in that process. So as far as the concerns about erosion during construction, visual impacts, site and noise impacts, I'm confident that those can all be addressed during final design. As far as the concerns about traffic impacts and impact to storefront on 50th Street, that is the main reason why this resolution recommends supporting relocating that station to 51st Street. We believe that in doing so, we can both provide the district with enhanced transit service while at the same time recognizing those concerns of the businesses.
So one of the other questions, I think maybe I forgot to say it, is the concern about pass-through traffic on Meadow, is it Meadow Drive or Meadow Brook Drive? That's right there at 47th Street, and some of the neighbors were concerned that if the stop was on the south side of the intersection, traffic would, would cut through the neighborhood there. Can you, and you and I talked about this, can you kind of tell us what the response is to that?
Of course. So Metro Transit hired Kimley Horn to do a traffic analysis of certain segments along the corridor, one of those being France, pretty much the entire segment of France. As part of that study, they determined that there really wouldn't be any significant impacts to traffic operations at France and 47th. They didn't see any impact to vehicle queuing that would indicate that there's going to be a large number of vehicles that make that detour, that detour route through 47th and Meadow Road.
And that's kind of because of the design of the buses, right? That it's, and the way the BRT is different from a regular bus stop, it's faster, right?
Correct. There, yeah, there are a number of features of BRT that make it faster than the current local bus route 6 that operates on the corridor right now. Some of those include the fact that the station platform is bumped out into the parking lane, essentially, on France Avenue, which means that the bus stays within the lane of traffic, doesn't waste time merging in and out. There's also off-board fare payment, similar to the light rail, so customers are not boarding the bus and wasting time getting change out and scanning their card. They pay for their ticket while they're waiting, and then they simply get on and off. The buses are also longer. They're 60-foot articulated buses, which have two doors, so that allow for quicker onboarding and offboarding.
Terrific. Thank you very much. So those are my questions.
Okay. Do you want to move the matter?
I will. I will move matter, let's see, Resolution 2022-42, supporting the E-line BRT.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt Resolution 2022-42, which supports the recommended corridor plan for the metro E-line Bus Rapid Transit project with the exception that we're asking Met Council to consider moving the proposed station platforms presently set on the southbound basis at least for 50th and France to move them down to the intersection of 51st and France. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2022-42, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. I can, I can tell you, on this particular topic, I was at a Southwest LRT Quarter Management Committee meeting this afternoon and had a conversation with the Metro Transit official who is there, who oversees all of this operation, and we, I've known him for a long time when, when he was over working with more carefully or closely with the TAB. He told me that, well, at the TAB, we just had this terrific working relationship, and so we were comfortable visiting with each other and being pretty candid about it. He said, you know, he said, I think the council's going to recommend that we stay at 50th and France because of the connecting routes through that 50th and France area. And I said, well, we're not in favor of that. And I said, even if, and if it comes to fruition that you, you do it at 50th and France, make those stations as small as you can. And he said that we, they'd think hard about that. But I said, we're going to push harder to move everything down to 51st and France. So we'll see what happens. I think it's time for us to lobby our, our Met Council rep and others on the Met Council as well, if we really believe in this notion of moving it down to 51st and France. Keep that in mind. Contact anybody you know on the Met Council. It's going to be an important vote. What it would mean if we didn't do it at 50th and France is that people on the connecting route would have to walk a block, and I don't think that's a lot to ask, in exchange for getting a 60-foot bus away from 50th and France intersection and blocking traffic and everything else. All right. We're going to move on now to special recognitions and presentations portion of the agenda. And the first matter we have here is a proclamation regarding what's called Preservation Month, and that's May 2022. And how good it is to be in May, we got some good weather coming our way finally. So the proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth and sustainable development, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride, and maintaining community character while enhancing livability; and whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, all walks of life, and all ethnic backgrounds; and whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas Preservation Month 2022 is sponsored by the Edina Heritage Preservation Commission, now therefore we, the city council of the city of Edina, do hereby proclaim May 2022 as Preservation Month and call upon the people of Edina to join their fellow citizens in recognizing and participating in this special observance Preservation Month, May 2022." Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Pierce, to adopt the proclamation involving Preservation Month, May 2022. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the proclamation as read, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have with us Annie Schilling, who is the Chair of the Heritage Preservation Commission. She's here to accept the proclamation, and we've got some awards to pass out. And so, Annie, I'm going to turn it over to you. Chair Schilling, go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, city council members. I gratefully accept the proclamation, and in conjunction with that, every May, the Heritage Preservation Commission has the great pleasure to award either an individual or an organization a recognition for outstanding work in preservation of our heritage resources here in the city of Edina. So I've just got a little bit of background on the award recipient for this year. The corner of Valley View and Wooddale has always been a community hub. For decades, the community has gathered there for convenience and just to be together. In 1951, the land on the northwest corner of the intersection of Valley View and Wooddale was purchased from a farm family with great vision. Someone had the foresight to see that that might be a great spot for a gas station. In 1951, we did not have our crosstown freeway, and Valley View was a thoroughfare for people traveling west to east, east to west. Sure enough, in 1953, Wally Grothie opened a gas station on that corner. I'm sure many of us remember the Wally's Gas Station sign. That business remained until 2014. Once that closed, a new person came to create a community hub. With that came Town Hall Station. Town Hall Station kept part of that original gas station sign, reminding us of what was there before, but that's not all that was kept. The original building remains. The project, the project did add a three-season porch and additional kitchen square footage, but demolition was not the focus of this, this project. Preservation was. The designers also brought in salvaged and very beautiful fixtures from around the Midwest. The approach avoided environmental impacts and brought this mid-century resource to life as a modern-day neighborhood hub, continuing this tradition of community gathering. For these reasons, the Heritage Preservation Commission is pleased to award Town Hall Station's designer, Brianna Detzler from Shea Design, and Pete, and Pete, I apologize if I pronounce your name wrong, Rafakes, one of the owners of Town Hall Station, the 2022 Edina Heritage Ward.
Well, we're getting kids moving around outside more now that the weather gets nice, and so our next proclamation deals with Kids to Parks Day, which is going to be designated as May 21, 2022. That proclamation reads as follows, "Whereas May 21, 2022 is the 12th Kids to Parks Day, organized and launched by the National Park Trust, held annually on the third Saturday of May. And whereas Kids to Park Day empowers kids and encourages families to get outdoors and visit local parks, public lands, and waters. And whereas we should encourage children to lead a more active lifestyle to combat issues of childhood obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and hyperchlorosthemia. And whereas Kids to Parks Day will broaden children's appreciation for nature and the outdoors, and whereas Kids to Park Day will recognize the importance of recreating responsibly while enjoying the benefits of the outdoors. And whereas the Edina Parks and Recreation Department has created many program offerings to the Spring and Summer Activities Directory for 2022. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim May 21, 2022 as Kids to Park Day in Edina, Minnesota." Is there a motion to adopt that resolution?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Jackson, second by Member Staunton, to adopt the Kids to Parks Day proclamation, which designates May 21, 2022 as Kids to Park Day in Edina and nationally, follows the national trend. All those in favor of adopting the proclamation is stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? We've got Perry Vedder, the director of our Park and Rec Department, here with us today to accept the proclamation and talk a little bit about some of the things that are going on in the city of Edina from a park and recreation standpoint. Director Vedder, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor, members of the city council. Thank you for adopting this proclamation in conjunction with the National Parks Trust, which their mission is to preserve and create environmental stewardship of the future, so getting kids to parks. While we do say May 21, Saturday, is Kids to Parks Day, we hope parents, grandparents, the children themselves, the teens, take every day to go outside and enjoy our park system. We have many program offerings through the Activities Directory that can be found at edinamn.gov. People can register. Some of those are at our park system, some of it are Recreation Enterprises throughout the year. I'm going to take a shameless minute here to plug. We have a dedicated staff that's putting that on this summer, but we can't do it alone. And I mentioned to the council earlier, we are still recruiting for summer assistants and summer help, particularly for those of you that know anyone that's interested in lifeguarding. We are not immune to our neighboring cities' shortages, as well as the shortage nationwide. So while I thank you for adopting this proclamation, we hope to see everyone out now that, it seems, spring has finally come here, and we actually have a little bit of sunshine to enjoy our park system. So thank you, Mayor. Thank you for the council for this proclamation.
Great. Thanks, Director Vedder. You might turn around to announce that again. Maybe there's some people in the audience put their hands up who want to be a lifeguard this summer.
Yep. We do recruitment and retention bonuses. We pay for your training. We will pay for your uniforms. So thank you.
Director Vedder, I'll hand you this proclamation. You know, we take a lot of pride, both in Edina and in Minnesota, on the quality of the elections that get run in our community and in our state. And once a year, we get to recognize the professionals that help make sure that these elections are appropriately done. And so the next proclamation deals with the celebration of Professional Municipal Clerks Week. And we've got a wonderful clerk in Sharon Allison and the deputy clerk that we have, Jane Tim, just do a first-rate job of making sure that our elections are run in the appropriate manner. So I'm going to read the proclamation that celebrates the 50th Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week, and that is May 1 through the 7, 2022. Whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerks, a time-honored and vital part of local government, exists throughout the world. And whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk is the oldest among public servants. And whereas the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk provides a professional link between the citizens, the local governing bodies, and agencies of government at other, at other levels. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks have pledged to be ever mindful of their neutrality and impartiality, rendering equal service to all. And whereas a Professional Municipal Clerk serves as the information center on functions of local government and community. And whereas Professional Municipal Clerks continually strive to improve the administration of the affairs of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk through participation in education programs, seminars, workshops, and the annual meetings of their state, provincial, county, and international professional organizations. And whereas it is most appropriate that we recognize the accomplishments of the office of the Professional Municipal Clerk, now therefore the city council of the city of Edina does hereby proclaim May 1 through the 7, 2022 as Professional Municipal Clerks Week in the city of Edina, and further extends appreciation to our Professional Municipal Clerk, Sharon Allison, and Deputy City Clerk, Jane Tim, and to all Professional Municipal Clerks for the vital services they perform and their exemplary dedication to the communities they represent. Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation? So moved. Second. Member Anderson moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of the proclamation dealing with designating May 1 through the 2, 2022 as the 53rd Annual Professional Municipal Clerks Week. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the proclamation, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Clerk Allison? Words of wisdom you care to share with the audience that's here this evening?
Not really, not words of wisdom, just to say thanks on behalf of Jane and myself for this recognition. It's greatly appreciated. And also, to those of you in the audience, would you like to help us out with election? We have two coming up in 2022. So if you'd like to help out, we're always looking for especially Republican judges. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. All right. The other item we have in this portion of the agenda this evening is what we call a hometown hero recognition, and we do this from time to time. what we call a hometown hero recognition, and we do this from time to time. And this is an organizational recognition of a hometown hero. A lot of ours have been, I think mostly, have been individuals that have done something really quite courageous. But we're going to honor the Edina Public Schools this evening, and I'm going to turn now to our Communications Director, Jennifer Bennerott, who is going to recognize the Edina Public Schools Health Services Staff for their hometown hero work. Director Bennerott.
Thank you. On April 29, Bloomington Public Health demobilized the incident command structure for COVID-19 782 days after it was stood up. Monday was their first or their last meeting before we began just calling this operationalized at this point. It's now part of our regular day-to-day work. So many healthcare professionals were on the front lines during the pandemic. Tonight, I am here to recognize a group of them as hometown heroes, Edina Public Schools' Health Services Staff. Even in a normal year, school nurses manage a full docket. In addition to first aid and triage duties, they can be found conducting hearing and vision screenings, educating parents about things like dental hygiene and immunizations, and carrying out many other protective measures to achieve the school district's health and wellness goals. Among the many additional responsibilities that sprouted up for nursing staff virtually overnight at the onset of the COVID-19 pandemic, none proved as time-consuming as the tracking of symptomatic students and their respective quarantine periods. A quick look at the numbers of this school year alone underscores their task. As of March 30, well over a month ago now, Edina Public Schools had recorded 1,788 COVID-19 infections, again, this school year alone. That number has likely increased since then. Besides contact tracing, the Health Services Staff has stretched themselves in other ways, too. They've introduced onsite COVID testing for staff, students, and students' family members, and they've been part of many community vaccination clinics. The City of Edina thanks these nearly 30 Edina Public Schools' Health Services Staff members for helping our youngest residents and their families during the pandemic, and we recognize them tonight as hometown heroes. I think a few more have snuck in. Of those 30, I have on my list representing licensed school nurses, Lacey Haveland of Highlands and Creek Valley Elementary.
That's good. Raise your hand when your name is called, please. Thank you.
Anne Lindquist from Valley View Middle School. Nicole Polk-Singer of Southview Middle School. And Anna Sande from the Early Childhood Center. Health Services Associates, who I know are here tonight, include Leslie Borgo of Cornelia Elementary. Donna Dyson of Edina High School. Ann Jenin from the Early Childhood Center. Deborah Link of Edina High School. Jen Smith of Valley View Middle School. And Heidi Youngdahl of Highlands Elementary School. Those of you who snuck in, will you raise your hands, too? There they are. Annually, May 6 through the 12th is National Nurses Week. School Nurse Day is celebrated on the Wednesday within that week. So next week, on Wednesday, May 11, thank a school nurse or a Health Services Associate for their service to our community. Will you all come forward for a photo and to receive your gifts? Okay, how about a couple of rolls? There we go.
Yep.
Thanks, guys. You look happy. That's great. All right, thank you.
All right, there's a lot of very good things being done in our community, and we should all be proud of these folks that serve us and our children so well. We're going to move on now to the Reports and Recommendations portion of the agenda. The first item there is Resolution 2022-45, which would accept donations to the City of Edina. If somebody wants to make a donation to the city, the City Council has to approve that according to state law by a supermajority. So we'll get these resolutions that accept donations on behalf of the City of Edina periodically in our packet, and we've got one this evening. Is there a motion to adopt Resolution 2022-45?
So moved. Second.
Member Staunton moves. Member Pierce seconds the adoption of Resolution 2022-45, which accepts donations on behalf of the City of Edina. Any further discussion? Those in favor of adoption of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, carried. This reporting period, there's one very nice donation to the Park and Rec Department by Linda Helen, $350 donation for a memorial tree at Maguire Park, on behalf of a loved one, I'm sure. So Linda Helen, thank you very much, and we'll post her name up on the website, city website, so that everybody can see that generous gift that she gave on behalf of someone that she cared about. And then next, we're going to move to the matter, the last matter in the Reports and Recommendations portion of the agenda, and that is recommendation from city staff on Fire Station Number Two, which has caused quite a bit of conversation in the community as we've tried to figure out where to put something that we all need. In a fully developed town, it's not easy, as all of you recognize, no matter what your view is on where it should go. But we've worked hard on it. We've hired experts to assist us. And this evening, I'm going to turn to Manager Neil, who's got some introductory comments, and then we're going to go to our fire chief, who's going to make his presentation and announce what they think is the recommended, or announce what is the recommended site from staff and from our experts. So Manager Neil.
Thank you. Thank you, Your Honor. It was probably five years ago, if not longer, when we started the process of thinking about the future of our EMS and fire services, doing kind of the normal planning for the future. Do we have the right number of firefighters? Do we have the right number of fire stations? Are they at the right places in the community to provide the level of service that we want to provide Edina residents? Part of the way we answered that question was by engaging a professional fire and EMS planning consultant called Five Bugles. They provided us some really top-notch information over the years that we have used to develop a plan going forward for how we would provide fire and EMS services to the community. Part of that has been the last 24 to 36 months, we've been working on, where might this be? If we do need a new station, where might it be? And we did need a new station, and we knew that it needed to be somewhere in the South Dale quadrant of the city. So we took the information that we had about staffing and response times, et cetera. We looked at a lot of different sites, and we have a site tonight that has emerged out of that process that we're recommending to you as the site for our new Fire Station Number Two. So we'd like to make that recommendation to you tonight, and with that, we'd like to, I'd like to ask our fire chief, Andrew Slama, if he would lead that presentation, and then we're happy to answer questions after he's completed.
Thank you, Manager Neil. Chief Slama, welcome. Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good evening, Mayor. Good evening, members of the council. Today's International Firefighters Day, so I think it's fitting to talk about a fire station and investing into our community for the future. Tonight, we're going to talk a little bit about the background, which Manager Neil prefaced for us. We'll talk about the selection process, how we got here, what those next steps were, and stand for any questions after the presentation. How'd we get here? So we talked about this as a long process. It started in 2017. We facilitated a study that started in 2018 and was presented to City Council in 2019. We asked the specific questions. Are we serving the public in a timely manner? Are our facilities adequate? Do they need to be expanded or replaced? How can we best serve the public in the future? And how do traffic patterns affect response time? That study was completed and, like I mentioned, presented to City Council in 2019, and we had a thing called COVID-19 during that period, which slowed us down. And so in 2021, we conducted a Fire Operations Town Talk. We conducted site review process, and that culminated with a City Council work session in February of this year, where we talked about the finalist, the site selection, and ultimately, we're provided direction by City Council to engage neighborhood concern and feedback. And we'll talk about that process throughout this. This presentation is based off the staff report that we submitted that has deeper information on this as well. The background of our current station, Station One, is our largest station at 62 and Tracy, and Station Two is a station at 73rd and York. We went into the background in previous presentations about the two stations and their operations, but that's what we evaluated and what the study served to evaluate. When they performed the study, we had to look at our call volume. Both fire and EMS were an advanced life support ambulance service that provides paramedic response and firefighter response to the residents and mutual aid response to other cities. Our call volume, as represented on this slide, the stronger the color, the more concentrated the call volume. And you can see that lines at the densely populated areas of our city, and that's how we make selections on where the fire station location is going to be. The recommendations from this study were keeping Station One in its current location, construct a new Station Two near the southwest corner of the South Dale Center. That was the epicenter, kind of the key area that we wanted to focus on, trying to get the station as close to that as we can. Plan for continued growth in the northeast quadrant and anticipating in five to 10 years, we'll need to build a third station, the general location of City Hall. That February work session, we talked about engaging the community, and how do we do that? We launched a Better Together Edina site, where we engage with residents virtually. We conducted a neighborhood meeting that was well-attended with almost 100 residents in attendance, where we discussed, provided a presentation, and allowed community comment. We continued that Better Together site open through April 15, where we collected concerns and feedback and presented them through a staff report. And we are here tonight for the City Council presentation. Factors for this site selection were response times to the entire community, needing two to four acres for an optimal station design, fire department operations taking that priority with site flow and development, and anticipating future growth of the community and future needs of the fire department. Another add-on for this was incorporating Public Health, a division that falls underneath the fire department, and incorporating a space for them to serve the public as well within the fire station. The two site finalists were 66 and Valley View, the parking lot at Roslyn Park, and 4401 76th Street West. They're both outlined here with the satellite images. How do we work through this process of evaluation? When we got directed by City Council to engage the neighborhood, we first worked with an internal staff team to, through a process that's new to the city, that is effectively known as the Values Viewfinder. These are city values that City Council has adopted, with race and equity, community engagement, health-in-all policies, and sustainability. The tool that we utilized helped prepare the table. This is a busy slide. It is in the staff report, but this helped us look through those specific lens, each specific lens, and how this station decision will be affected. So for benefit and access, what are those potential benefits, opportunities that can be created by this action of selecting the fire station site? What we know with health-in-all policies, response time, staff space, incorporating public health, and creating programming space would create health-in-all policies through that lens. We also know that there are barriers and impacts through each one of these lenses, too, and that can change with this site selection. So what are those potential negative impacts or consequences? There's a potential change in response time. While it may better some, for some people, it may affect others elsewhere. There's neighborhood impact that we have to look at. The community engagement process, we can improve public access. We have to look at public interaction and safe space. We know the fire station is a landmark in the city that our residents should feel safe and be able to contact public safety to help them in their emergency. This impact with any change, there will be impact with any change with the community, different plans at each site, and frustration with the engagement process. There was a definite frustration with the engagement process as we looked through this lens. We know with race and equity, we can increase service to the diverse and underserved population that we have. The southeast quadrant with Station Two is served by only one ambulance right now, due to staffing quarters, the size of the station. Our largest call volume comes from the southeast quadrant and currently does not have the capacity to serve it appropriate for that underserved population. The potential increase in response time for some, as we said, as we move the station, the response times will move with it. And access made different for different groups of people, so we have to understand that as we're making these decisions. And then for sustainability, we can build the station with environment inefficiencies versus the current station. We know we can increase this with the values of sustainability in mind, and future-proofing that space for the city, ensuring that it can be built for the future. We know on the opposite of that is tear-down or demo or potential reduction in green space could affect that. And then the city values alignment, just knowing that we would want programming flexible space that's open and welcoming, and staff amenities, including mental and physical health for staff that engage with emergency response. I talk about the fixed factors. The station location is a fixed, once we build a fire station, it's a fixed location where we can now predict how long it will take us to drive from one place to another. That becomes a fixed factor once the site's selected. That response profile, how we respond based on the information we get is a fixed factor, whether we're using emergency lights and sirens. And we all know that this is a critical service that we need in the city. There's variable factors with the site selection. The call volume varies from day to day. The time of the emergency will vary. The type of emergency and the location of that emergency, the traffic varies depending on these. So these are variable factors that cause impacts to the neighborhoods and residents. Both these fixed and variable factors have to be considered. We talk about the neighborhood meeting that took place on March 31, the Better Together site, where there's a full report in the staff report on this engagement process. But the Roslyn Parking Lot site, as you can see here, had more concerns and more feedback on than the 76th Street site. Many of these concerns were around safety, traffic, property impacts, the loss of green space, loss of parking, or the parking ramp being a concern, the lot size and park access. And the 76th Street site, the lot site, how we would access that, would there be traffic impacts from that site, what neighborhood impacts were there, and the increase in development around that site. These inputs have to be considered when we're making this decision. The study, that call volume and capacity, the southeast quadrant demand, there's technical inputs, such as the engineering, the stormwater assessment that needs to be completed, the parks and recreation impacts, any environmental impacts that may have regardless of the site selection, that public input, those concerns and neighborhood impacts, how we include that in that final recommendation, and the City Council values, as we mentioned before. These considerations are important as we look at, there's advantages and disadvantages of every site, infrastructure updates that would be needed, department operations having to take priority with the site development. with the site development, ensuring those city values are met with the site selection. The three-station model is an important note to recommend. If we were going with a different station model, that would affect that site selection, whether it was a two, three, or a four-station model. So, it's important to recognize that recommendation through the study with this decision. The environmental evaluation, budget goals, neighborhood feedback, those fixed and variable factors, and ultimately, the response time with this decision. Why is response time important? Fire doubles in size every minute. Even if we're not talking about fire, we're talking about smoke damage, sprinkler or water activation, rescues needing a quick and efficient response. And on the paramedic side, the 7% to 10% survival and reduction time, the time, the clock that I spoke about before about with stroke and trauma and getting people to the appropriate facilities as quickly as we can. I like to mention difficulty breathing and how, if you're short of breath, how that can make an individual very scared. And when the ambulance shows up, there's a relief to that. So, having that quick response is important as we think about that. This is the city quadrants. We talk about the southeast quadrant. The city is broken up with Highway 100 and Highway 62 breaking it up into four quadrants. As we lay over the population, each one of these dots represents one person. This is from the city census, so associated to a city block, randomized on that block. And the call density, so the call volume that we have included in this shows the call density with each one of these dots representing one call. And you can see the densely populated areas. As we add in the station locations, so this is what would happen if this station was built today with current Station One located where you see on here and the 76th Street site. You can see on the right side here, the zero to two minutes and two to four minutes is the physical drive time from that station to the borders of each color zone. This two-station model would be, as this change takes place, this is how it would exist today, the drive time that would be affected once the station is constructed. As we look over at 66 and Value View, as we move the station, the response time maps move with it. And our goal is to try to make sure that we accommodate the most effective response and the most effective drive time to this entire community. Now, when we talk about the three-station model, we have the same city quadrants, that same population overlaid and the same call density. Should a proposed Station Three be built now, as we make this decision, we want to ensure what that would look like and how we could accommodate that with a three-station model. So, as you can see with the 76th Street site serving the southeast quadrant, we have a large representation of that under-six-minute goal that we're trying to achieve throughout the city. As we transition to the 66 and Value View site, we have still similar performance, but more areas with the eight to 10-minute response that you see that do not exist with the 76th Street site. This is my favorite slide and it's a slide that I tried to get Pete Fisher to hold a plate so he can demonstrate, but he, against, probably in his better judgment, he didn't take me up on it. But when we talk about considerations, I think many people think of site selection as just taking the pros and the cons and weighing them against one another. And I like to identify a site selection as balancing a tray. And each one of these considerations, whether they're critical factors, the appearance, the neighborhood emotion, the programming, the vocal minorities, the traffic and safety, engineering, and budget goals represent different weights that get placed on this tray. And the goal that we have is to make the most balanced selection today for the city, but we will never be perfect. There is no perfect site. Rather, we have to weigh all of these factors as we make this final decision. After a review of all the feedback and critical factors, the staff recommends 4401 76th Street West to replace Fire Station Two. The site is positioned well to serve current and future call volume in the southeast quadrant and anticipated development in the quadrant. Our recommended action tonight is to approve the recommended site and enter into an agreement with the owners of 4401 76th Street West for purchase. And with that, I'll turn it back to Manager Neil.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief.
Chief. Your Honor, I think I just want to add just a little bit more emphasis onto the recommended action for tonight. We have been working on this project for a long time. We are pretty confident at this stage that this is the best overall site for Fire Station Number Two for the future. This particular recommendation, if you agree to it tonight, gives us the concrete direction to start the acquisition process for this site. And it also has the second-order effect of reducing anxiety among folks who are concerned about this subject and concerned about the future of Roslyn Park. So, I think you can accomplish a couple of important actions with the support of the recommendation, and that's what I have for you tonight.
All right. Thank you, Manager Neil. Thank you, Chief Slama. Council members, anybody have questions for Manager Neil or for Chief Slama on this analysis process that we all went through together over the past several years? Member Pierce?
Not a question on the analysis per se, but Manager Neil, could you speak to the process from this point forward if we were to enter into an agreement to procure that site? Just describe the process we would go through.
Sure. The process we would go through is we've already had some initial discussions with the owners of that site. It's owned by a real estate investment trust, so fairly dispassionate people, property owners, you know, as property owners go. We have a letter of interest that we have reached with these folks in terms of a price. We would begin the process of negotiating that price and a more formal purchase agreement. We would do all the kinds of things that you would do if you were going to buy a new home. We'd start doing the analysis of the site. We know a fair amount about what's under the surface of the ground down there because there's been some projects in the last couple of years that have given us some insight into what we might be coming for. If we could reach an agreement on the site and the purchase agreement, we would purchase the site, we would begin the process of, probably simultaneously, we're also entering into architectural RFPs and we're evaluating architects. We have started that process with owners' reps and construction management assistants on this site already. The process would then take a design turn and we'd be spending a lot of time on design, come around to a final design that we would take out to the public in forms of an open public bidding process for the construction of the building. Then, it just determines what time of year and what's the economy like in terms of construction timing. There may be, there's probably also a regulatory set of steps in that process as well. We need to talk to Mr. Teague about that and about what we would seek to do on the site. One of the big advantages to this site is that it has some opportunity for us because it's more land than is just minimally required for a fire station.
Thank you. Yeah, just a couple of other comments. So, I just wanted to thank you, Chief, for a couple of things. One, just acknowledging the frustration that was inherent in the process. And I do think that it's good to acknowledge that. There's always going to be challenges, like you said, but I think we're all people and people all like to be valued and heard. And so, I think you acknowledging that there were some frustrations in the process is a, I really appreciate you doing that. The second thing I would just thank you for is acknowledging the value lens that we looked through and specifically talking about sustainability is one and race and equity. And it goes back to my first point. People like to understand, be valued, heard, things that they care about. It's important for us to talk about, we care about those things as well, so I appreciate that. And then, the other comment I wanted to make, and this may sound a little odd, but I thank you for considering Roslyn Park. And I say that because I do think it would be irresponsible of us as a council, given that that particular site is quite a bit less expensive than the other. And so, because we are fiduciary, we have fiduciary responsibility for the tax base and the projects that we have, I do think it would be irresponsible of us to at least not consider a site where we own the land. But if we do the process right and we engage the way that we did, we'll go through the process and I think we end up with a good solution. And so, I just wanted to thank you and the city staff for the processes that we've gone through to get to this point. So, that's it.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Chief, for spending the time on this. And I concur with Member Pierce's evaluations in many ways. The amount of research and the evaluation process that staff has gone through for many years, frankly, I can remember the very first work session that I sat in as an elected was the report from Five Bugles. And while it seems like a long time ago, at least to me, it seems like a long time ago, I was so impressed that night with the completeness of their reporting, but also how important it was to move forward. And so, I have a great sense of relief that tonight, we're going to make a decision about that. And frankly, I personally concur with staff's evaluation completely. And in evaluating the site, driving around it, taking a look at it, I can see how much more flexibility there is also into the future for additional services and facilities on that site. It gives us a great deal of flexibility. So, again, thank you and especially thanks to the staff for all the work that went into that.
Member Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So, I want to also say thank you very much. I think the mayor alluded to this when this discussion started, that we're a fully developed city, so this was not an easy process in any way, shape, or form. So, thank you for your patience and your diligence in doing this. I think it's really important to explore every opportunity and every option that we have, and I think that you did that thoroughly and responsibly, and I really appreciate that. And it was a difficult thing to look at and we've got free land and I appreciate the fact that you considered that. I have to say, I liked the 76th Street from the beginning and I'm really happy that that's where we're landing. I also want to acknowledge the variety and creativity of the comments from the neighbors and from the community. Boy, the stories that I've heard and just the different levels of analysis were really interesting and this is such an incredible community. We have so many smart, engaged people that the comments were just kind of mind-blowing. I go, I hadn't thought of that. So, I really am always pleased to hear the different brains in this community working, including yours, Chief Slama. So, with that, I am in favor of this and I echo the comments of my other City Council members. One thing I do want to mention is that this would be a really nice site for an art center as well. And so, I just want to put that idea out there. It's something we covered in a work session, but I think that would be pretty cool and there might be room for that there. So, thank you so much.
Thank you. Member Sutton?
I just echo the same comments my colleagues have made and add to it, my thanks to staff for your work on this. And especially, I want to note, you're listening. You know, I think there were reasonable reasons, as Member Pierce described, for pursuing the Roslyn Park facility from a financial perspective, but the fact that you heard what was being said and then you made the recommendation that you did, I think speaks volumes. So, thank you for your work in that.
Thank you. Member Sutton, as I was listening to my colleagues, I was thinking about, I guess particularly when Member Pierce started thinking about... Thinking about, in ancient Greece, when the concept of democracy was created and the notion was that all voices should be heard and all voices mattered, and I think that's one of the important things that we've seen happen here. Now, we may not always get the public input right, but we're trying our best over time to get better and better public engagement, and I think we've been pretty effective in that effort. The notion that you look at this from both an objective standpoint, I guess my interpretation of what you said, Chief, you look at it with all these objective factors and then you look at the subjective factors. And it can pull you in one direction or another because certainly, as Member Sutton points out, from a pure costing standpoint, it would have been cheaper to go to the land that we owned. The wisdom of having a 300-vehicle ramp sitting empty nine months of the year, kind of, you wonder about that, but, and then taking other land off the tax rolls. But on balance, I think that you all did an effective job and the council as well in looking at the objective and the subjective factors and listening to people in our community that had the concerns that you articulated in the report that you just gave. As Member Sutton said, I also want to thank some staff people here with, and Member Pierce alluded to this, the Values View Finder, and you talked about that as well. MJ Lehman, our Community Engagement Manager, Heidi Lee, our Race and Equity Manager, Jeff Brown, our Public Health Administrator, Grace Hancock, our Sustainability Manager, all helped put this process together of community well-being that looks at those four categories that you articulated, race and equity, community engagement, sustainability, health and all policies. And the purpose of using that tool with respect to the Fire Station Two site selection phase was to support how we went about figuring out what the recommendation was going to be, not trying to help decide where it would be, but how the process would work so that we considered in all way, always, always, community well-being. And I think the outcome tonight reflects that. Over the years, I've been involved in activities for the city and on the City Council. I've seen some, Member Sutton would call it elasticity with respect to what people are willing to pay for in our community to get what they think is important to have. And one historic example was, there was a time when we had the chance to go down to the county and have our dispatch taken care of down there instead of having our own dispatch center here. It might have delayed response times, especially on emergency medical services. Our residents said, "Don't do that. Don't do that." We like having our own fire department, our own emergency medical services personnel, our own dispatch center. We're willing to pay for that. And I think we're seeing that same expression of support here in the general public around the notion that we know we need this fire station, we know we need Fire Station Two, and we know we need Fire Station Three. Just make sure they're in the right places. And if it's going to cost a little bit more to do it the right way, to do it the Edina way, which is the right way, we're willing to support that. And that's what I think you've heard from people all the way through this process. So, I support this decision as well. I think it's the right decision. And I think, as several people have pointed out, it gives us some great flexibility in terms of some other things that we could potentially do on that eight-acre piece of property that we can't do in a city park. So, on balance, I think it was a great recommendation. Thanks everybody for all the work they did. Is there a motion to approve the recommended site and enter into a purchase agreement with the owners of 4401 West 76th Street?
So moved.
Second. Got a motion by Member Sutton, second by Member Pierce, to approve the recommended site and enter into a purchase agreement with the owners of 4401 West 76th Street. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. Thank you, folks, for being here this evening. Thank you all for coming in. Thanks for your level of interest and care for your community. Appreciate it. And if you want to stick around, you can hear some public hearing activity.
Well, there they go.
Okay, so much for that idea. Okay, so much for that idea. next topic, which is back to public hearings, and we've got two matters here this evening. The first is a potential approval of a right-of-way easement. It's a vacation of property, potential vacation of an easement on Waterman Avenue, and Director Chad Milner, our Director of Engineering, has this matter. Director Milner, welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Mayor. Members of the council, like you mentioned, we have a consideration of a vacation of easements on Waterman Avenue, embodied in Resolution 2022-43. So the area in question is along Waterman Avenue. As it comes off of Blake Road to the east, it was used as an access to the Interlock and Golf Course. The request comes from the Interlock and Golf Course. This is an over there. The top is the graphic of the vacation, and the bottom is an aerial photo of what is being vacated. So if you look on the top, where that big red line is, that's where a gate is going in for their recent project that they're completing. So there won't be any access to that street or driveway, however you want to classify it, into the country club any longer, and the city does not want to maintain that pavement any longer. So they're requesting we vacate that. From a pavement and street rights standpoint, we will continue to hold rights to the underground utilities that are in there. There's a water main and a sanitary sewer. So the request is from their gate up to, just about up to the end of their tennis courts there, you can see on that bottom graphic.
So just to be clear, the red line represents where the new gate would go on Waterman that we approved?
Correct. There's a cul-de-sac and a new gate there.
All right. And then from there east into the Interlock and property is what they want to have us consider vacating?
Yep. We want to vacate the street rights there, so they'll have to maintain that going forward in the street, and we still have access to those utilities.
Go ahead to your next slide.
We support it. The private utilities have no issues with that vacation, and we would recommend that you make a motion to close the public hearing at noon on May 9, and to continue this action on the May 17 city council meeting. We do have a Better Together Edina page set up to collect further comments, in addition to any we may receive here tonight, and I can stand for any other questions.
All right, very good. Any questions for Director Milner? Otherwise, I'll turn to public testimony with regard to this matter. First of all, is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? I'm going to open it up for public hearing now. All right, hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, I'm going to remind folks that may be watching on cable TV or on their computer, on Facebook, edinamn.gov live meetings. You can call in now. This is your second and final opportunity of the evening to call in. This is a public hearing, the first of two public hearings. 800-374-0221. You see the conference ID number there in front of you on the screen. Give the operator your name, your street address, and your phone number. Press star 1, and that'll get you into the queue to speak, and then Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. So Director Bennerott, do we have anybody waiting in the queue to speak to the council on this matter?
I do not have anyone on the line anymore. Because I'm not sure, it's been a full minute, and there is a delay in the broadcast, I would recommend we wait a minute before moving on. My clock shows that it's 8:17, so I'll come back to you at 8:18 or when I have a caller, whichever is first.
All right, thank you.
It is now 8:18, and my operator says no one's trying to get through, so I think it's safe freedom of forward.
All right. Director Milner has asked that we engage in our practice since the beginning of COVID in these hybrid situations, and that is that we leave this matter open for further public input until noon on May 9, 2022, and continue the action to the May 17, 2022 city council meeting. If you recall, when we discussed Interlock and before, Member Pierce needed to abstain, and I'm going to turn to Member Pierce now to see if he wants to abstain on this motion that's going to be made.
Yes, Mr. Mayor.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
So the motion would be to close the public hearing at noon on May 9, 2022, and continue the action to the May 17, 2022 city council meeting. Is there a motion of that effect?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion by Member Sutton, second by Member Jackson, to close the public hearing at noon on this road vacation request, close at noon on May 9, 2022, and continue the action to the May 17, 2022 city council meeting. Any further discussion? All those in favor of the action as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Abstentions? Yes, we have abstentions from Member Pierce.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
All right. The motion passes. This matter will be held open for further public input until noon on May 9, and then we'll deal with it at the May 17, 2022 city council meeting. The last matter of the evening is another public hearing, at least in this section of the agenda, and it involves Resolution 2022-46, which is a site plan review for 4931 77th Street West. And this is a matter that's been in front of the council before, and Director T is going to explain why we have to revisit the issue and something that we previously approved. And we've got some folks here tonight, I think, to make a presentation with regard to this matter. So I'm going to turn now to our Community Development Director, Kerry Teague. Director Teague?
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. So this property is located down in Pentagon Park, Pentagon Village, which is, this project is known to go by. It's guided in our comprehensive plan for office residential use, and it has been rezoned to planned unit development, as mentioned. Back in 2018, this is a look at the overall development plan that was approved for the site. So we established a PUD zoning ordinance specifically for this site. We're looking at the property in the middle, which was to be a 235-room hotel. The building never moved forward with the pandemic. Hotels weren't being built at that time. So in Edina, site plans, site plan approvals are good for two years. So that two-year site plan approval for this site has expired. When the property first developed with the two retail buildings, the park, and the parking deck, all of the surface parking and the drive aisles have all been installed. So really, what's out there today is a vacant building pad for the hotel. Again, all of this has been installed. Here's a look at the approved PUD. So this is the hotel that was proposed for the site, and they're proposing essentially the same thing. Again, this is a look at the hotel that was approved. So this is the hotel before you this evening. It is the same. They have, the footprint is the same. They've increased the number of rooms from 235 to 239, which shouldn't impact parking or traffic in any way. I show the pyramid of discretion, as this is a unique one. We don't see too many that meet our city code. So we're up here with a site plan review where we have very little discretion. When the project was approved, it was a rezoning where we did have more discretion. So again, it is a site plan review, which basically is the same site plan that was approved back in 2018. Building materials, generally the same. The stone on the bottom has been replaced with this ledge stone, and the building materials for the rest of the building are essentially the same. Again, site plan doesn't change. They have increased the landscaping around the building, so some slight improvements there. This has been posted on Better Together. We just received one comment. It was a general comment about the architecture itself. So the action this evening, we're asking that you hold the public hearing this evening and then close the hearing on May 9 at noon and continue the item to the May 17 city council meeting. Jay Scott, the master developer, is here this evening. Jay Bakhta with JR Hospitality is virtually attending, should you have any questions for him. And William Bauer, the engineer on the project from SEH, is also here. So I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Teague at this point in time from council members? Is there anyone on behalf of the applicant that wishes to make a presentation?
Mr. Mayor, I guess, because I've never seen a site review, can you just tell me a little bit more what a site review is, sort of zoning 101?
Certainly. Yes, site plan review is just reviewing the basic, essentially the survey of how the site will be developed. We compare it. Building materials, we review. Setbacks, we review. This is all code compliant within the PUD. General circulation patterns, number of parking stalls, all of those types of things. So again, that was examined back in 2018 as part of this overall development plan.
So it's a dotting the i's and crossing the t's kind of review?
Yeah, it's really a checklist against the zoning ordinance to make sure that it does comply. We don't get too many of those in Edina.
Well, that's why I asked, so thank you.
We've had a few, I think, on the Saltail Mall site, site plan review, where our review was limited to site plan review with very little discretion in terms of what they wanted to build over there.
That is correct. We've had some code compliance projects there as well.
Okay. Yes, please, come forward, and please introduce yourself and give us your business address.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. My name is William Bauer with SEH. We're the engineer of record on the project. Business address is 10400 Yellow Circle Drive, Suite 500 in Minnetonka.
Thanks, Mr. Bauer, for being here.
Thank you. And on behalf of JR Hospitality, I want to thank you guys for the opportunity to come here this evening and present the Fairfield Inn and Suites and Towne Place Suites proposed development. A lot of this is going to be regurgitation of the information that Mr. Teague just shared, so I'll try to move quickly through those parts of the presentation. JR Hospitality is the developer on the project. They have been operating hotels in the Midwest for over 30 years, and together with Hawkeye Hotels, they have partnered with some of the more well-known brands nationally, including Marriott and Hilton. They currently operate 13 total hotels between the states of Minnesota and Wisconsin, and that includes seven individually within the Twin Cities metro area, and including this one here tonight, there's another six for a total of seven that are currently under development in the Twin Cities. So again, there's the site in front of you, the kind of north and east of Interstate 494 and Highway 100 interchange, and again, the approved Pentagon Park South development that Mr. Teague was showing. Again, this is a site that is ultimately going to be used by all parties there. There's shared parking along the south side of the development, and then the surface parking that Mr. Teague was discussing previously, that ultimately will be used by guests of the hotel. And then in terms of stormwater management, there's an underground stormwater management system located underneath that parking lot to the north and east of the hotel site that will treat and retain the stormwater from the site. As we have said, the hotel ultimately is going to be dual-branded, and while they're both upper-mid-scale brands, the intent is kind of cater to a wide variety of the population. While it's looking, both are looking to attract both business and leisure travelers, the Fairfield Inn and Suites in particular is going to be your more traditional short-term stay hotel, maybe a weekend or up to a week at a time. And then the Towne Place Suites is the extended stay brand for folks or travelers that are needing to stay in town for a longer period of time, and that brand in particular is included in the Marriott family of hotels. The amenities between the two hotels, because they're going to be one singular building, are ultimately going to be shared between the two. So some of those amenities include a breakfast buffet and indoor pool, a fitness center, a business center. All of those are going to be shared in common spaces on the main level between the two hotels for all guests of either hotel to use at their leisure. And then again, as Mr. Teague discussed, this project was originally approved back in 2019 and then unfortunately delayed due to the COVID-19 pandemic. There have been no changes to the site plan in that time, and then, as Mr. Teague said, there's been just a couple of slight changes to the landscaping plan and the building plan. With regards to the latter, as he said, the room count increased slightly from 235 to 239, but ultimately, no changes to the building footprint have been made to accommodate that change. And that is everything that I have for you guys this evening at this time. I'll take your questions or comments. Thank you.
Sure, thanks, Mr. Bauer. Anybody have any questions for Mr. Bauer at this point in time? Hang on, Mr. Bauer. With respect to the materials that we approved originally, I take it that it's the same materials being used again, and Director Teague has probably already checked this, but is that accurate?
I believe there have been some slight changes to the materials. I think he talked about the ledger stone. That was a change from before, but to my knowledge, there haven't been any other changes.
But it's still a stone product?
Correct.
Okay. All right. And then Mr. Bakhta's with us virtually. Mr. Bakhta, this is the mayor.
No, I don't have any one time.
Oh, you don't have? I thought they said he was going to be with us virtually.
I thought he was going to be here with us, too.
All right, okay. You're the only representative here on behalf of the applicant? Yeah, that's fine.
As far as I know.
You're okay. All right. Anybody else have questions for Mr. Bauer? Question I proponent caused anything. Mr. Scott, is anything you want to add from an applicant's standpoint?
No, but if there's any specific questions, I'm happy to answer those.
All right. Is there anyone in the audience? I'm going to open this up now for a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to testify regarding this matter? All right, because this is a public hearing matter, we're now going to check with folks that might be on the line that want to testify remotely. And again, the number you should call in should be coming up on the screen. There it is. And don't forget to give the operator your name and your street address and your phone number, and then press star 1 to get in the queue to speak, and Director Bennerott will bring you in to speak to the council. Do we have anybody in the queue, Director Bennerott?
I don't have anyone even on the line right now. I do recommend we wait a minute or so before moving on. My clock shows it's 8:31. I'll come back to you at 8:32 or when I have a caller. It is now 8:32, and I do not have a caller, so I think you can move forward.
Thank you, Director Bennerott. Director Teague has recommended that we leave this matter open for further public input until May 9, 2022, at noon. Is there a motion to close the public hearing on May 9, 2022, at noon, and then continue the item to the May 17, 2022 city council meeting for a resolution?
So moved.
Second.
All right. Member Pierce moves. Member Jackson seconds. The motion is stated. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of the motion as stated, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. All right, we'll leave this matter open for further public input until May 9 at noon, and then we'll take it up at our next city council meeting in May. Mr. Scott and Mr. Bauer, thanks for being here. Nice to see activity coming back into the hotel industry. Good to hear that you've probably got a lot of work around town here with seven hotels underway with Hawkeye, so thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you.
All right, very good. That completes the public hearing portion of the agenda, and now we're going to go to community commission correspondence. Did we have anything come in?
No, just a minute.
All right. And then we're going to go to manager comments, and he's got his quarterly financial report that's been provided to all of us that I think he wants to give us an update on, in addition to some other things that he may want to cover. Manager Neal?
Thank you, Your Honor. Yes, the big thing I want to confer with you on is actually not listed, and that is resolving the June 7 rescheduling question for the council. We have already resolved We have already resolved the rescheduling of the HRA meeting that was scheduled for the week, first week of June. I made a proposal to council yesterday about doubling up on that date, having a morning council meeting, which isn't something we've done for a long time. How does that strike you?
I think I responded that it worked for me. I don't know if others did.
I'm unavailable.
Yep. I mean, you're gone regardless.
I'm gone, yeah.
Yep. Okay. So it works for four of us.
Then we will do that.
All right, very good. And then, did you want to comment on the quarterly financial report?
Just to answer questions if anybody has any questions.
All right. I made a hard copy because I wanted to take a look at it, but I don't have any questions now. Anybody else have questions? Anything else?
Record building permits are, we are on a record pace, a strong record pace actually right now. So there's a lot of activity going on there.
I noticed it was at US Bank at 70th and France today, and they've started.
They've started to pull it down.
They're picking apart that section of the US Bank building along France Avenue, and they've got the site set up for the bank to do the work over there. So it was exciting. See all those Mortenson jersey barriers up. All right, let's go to council comments, and we'll start with Member Jackson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. So I've got a couple of things. The Energy and Environment Commission sent us an advisory communication, and they had quite a few questions, and I wanted to respond to it. They've got a bunch of new members, and I think they're really excited to be meeting in person again, and a lot of energy there, and I want to capture that. They asked questions about our budget and about our legislative agenda, and I want them to know that those are public documents. And we have a budget work plan, pillars and values, and we spent a lot of time working on that. And if they're concerned about how our budget is reflected in sustainability, I encourage them to take a look at that. One of the things we talked about in Underlivable City is funding, implementing the climate action plan. So it's being planned for, and people are working on it, but it's always good to bring that to the notice of folks. Same with the legislative agenda. It does have quite a bit of sustainability items in it, and it's really the time for updating that is in November and December. So if they want to take a look at that later in the year, they can, I mean, they can look at it now, but update it. And I looked at their work plan. They've got an ambitious work plan, and for the new members, I hope that they take a look at that and join the different activities. But I do think it's important that they know that we're listening to them, and I appreciate all of their energy. On Monday, we had the commissioner, retiring commissioner event, which was really lovely. It was fun to be able to talk one-on-one with folks. We had a new format where it was more of a party, where we just kind of had hors d'oeuvres and sat around and visited, and we had some really good in-depth conversations. And as always, I'm so impressed with the people who want to give time and energy to our community, and I was really happy to see everyone there and to thank them for their service, the people who have come off our commissions. Finally, I've been involved with a group called City Leaders Against Wage Theft and Tax Fraud. And this is something that the carpenters union approached me with when I was first elected, and they've been looking at this. These are complex crimes, and it's both civil and criminal, and they're looking for help in every way they can to sort of cast a net. Some of these stories are pretty grim, what they find. We don't have a lot of that in Edina. In fact, you know, I know both the police chief and Manager Neal said they haven't gotten a lot of concerns about that, but I think it's important that communities across the metro and across Minnesota are aware of it. So there's going to be a story in the Minnesota Reformer tomorrow about this, and it goes into pretty detail about what's happening. And I attended an event on April 23, and I wanted to let you guys know I was working on that. And those are my comments.
Thank you. Member Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a note of commendation for Director Milner and Director Olson. We all received a communication from a resident who was expressing concern about the decomposition along Hillary Lane this week. And what I noticed was, our chief engineer was immediately back to her the next day and gave her input about the fact that, well, we're not funded on that till 2026, but let's go take a look. The very next day, I saw that Director Olson was in communication saying, yep, we took a look, and we'll see if we can find a short-term fix, at least on the pedestrian side of that. You know, I ride through there every other day all summer long, and it's in rough shape, and so it was of interest to me when we received that. And I just wanted to say thanks for that immediate response. That's a land speed record, I think. And I'm assuming that that resident is particularly pleased, but everyone should know about that, so good job.
Thank you. Member Staunton?
Nothing for me.
Member Pierce?
Just one thing. I had registered to do plant trees on the 6th, and I can't be there. And I just want you guys to know that. My father, I think you know, my dad's 86, and when 86-year-old dad says, hey, you kids ought to come home, we kind of just go home. So I'll be leaving after work on the 6th and be in Alabama through the 9th. So I'm going to miss that. But I was really excited about doing it, so enjoy it. I will come out and admire all the work that was done over that Friday. And then the last thing, I have commented to a couple of folks this week, and I know I told Member Anderson this. Somebody asked me, did I enjoy city council? It wasn't Member Anderson who asked. Because he already knows the answer to that. But I had to think about it, and I told him, I can't think of any job that I have done in the past that I have enjoyed more than this. And so I think that's a testament to each of you, the city, the residents, the way they engage, and the city staff. So I just want to say thanks. I think it was hard for me to think of a time where I've enjoyed something more than this, and I couldn't come up with anything. So thank you. That's it.
High praise, but don't quit your day job. Lieutenant Gomboy, thanks for the urine review. We all got that, appreciate that. On the way to the board and commission retirement event on Monday night, I stopped at Roslin Park, and there were probably 100 Afghans there celebrating the end of Ramadan. The Rotary Club in Edina has been, I would say, the lead entity, and Member Staunton and Jackson can reinforce this, but when they started to place Afghans into the Twin Cities that had helped our troops in Afghanistan as either interpreters or working with the military in some other capacity and brought their families here, Rotary was right there to try to figure out how to make that transition as easy as possible. And when I was over there Monday, there were a lot of happy faces, but you could still see that, like everybody else, they missed home, you know? But home's a dangerous place. And the men were cooking, and the women and the kids were over on the playground and having a wonderful time. Everybody was all dressed up. The leader of the group is named Shaw, and I had a nice conversation with him. And if anybody ever wants to go to a meeting on a Saturday, they meet, I think it's at 1 o'clock every Saturday at the Edina Community Center, and Rotary has people there. And so they'll have immigration lawyers there, they'll have other folks there from the state that will help them on particular issues. They may have ESL teachers there so they can get lined up for themselves and their kids, how to pass a driver's test, how to get a car. I mean, the things that they have to assimilate to are really incredible. But you felt really good about them enjoying the park in Edina, that they had chosen, of all the places they could have gone, they chose to come to Edina. And I said, well, why aren't you up there using the pavilion? They said, well, we can, but we're cooking over here, we're doing this over here. So I think in the future, if they want to use that park, we should make sure we try to accommodate them some way somehow. And I think Manager Neal and I talked about that. Perry Vetter and I talked about it as well. And then I'll send out something tomorrow, just an update on Southwest LRT. There was that quarter of management committee meeting today, and they had a pretty good handout, but I've got it electronically. I'll send it to all of you so you can look through it and see the progress on the line. And of course, the trouble spot continues to be down in the Kennelworth Quarter where they're trying to punch that tunnel through in very sandy conditions. And now they've discovered a crack on the 10th floor of the condominium building right next door. There's now a conversation amongst engineers as to what's the cause of the problem. It was supposed to have an expansion joint in it, the condominium building that was originally built. It's one of those felt pieces like you'd see in a road.
O-ring.
Yeah, and that's missing. It's not there. So, I mean, there's, we'll get this done, but it's going to be a bit yet. So anyway, I think that's it for me. Anybody else think of anything else, anything else they wanted to address with the council? All right. Member Anderson, you're a clear winner tonight for what it was worth. I don't know if it was.
It was locked in.
Yeah. And is there a motion? Yeah, we got a motion to adjourn. Do you want to go into filibuster? See if you can get to 9:30?
All for 50 cents.
Yeah, we'll give you the 50 cents. Member Staunton moves we adjourn.
Second.
Member Pierce seconds his motion. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adjourning, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. Stand adjourned.